I had to call the Onslow County Board of Commissioners' regular meeting from Monday, December 1st, 2025, to order at this time. And we'll start by asking our county attorney, Mr. Brett DeSelm's, to lead us in the invocation. Mr. DeSelm?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity to come before you and conduct the business of Onslow County. Lord be with the commissioners in their deliberations and bless them with the wisdom and guidance as they address the items on today's agenda. May all we do this day bring you honor and glory. Amen. Now with deep respect and reverence for the face, beliefs, and traditions of those gathered here today, join me in a moment of silence.
Thank you. Thank you. Please stand for pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. At this time, we will turn the meeting over to our county manager, Mr. David Smitherman.
Thank you, sir. At this time, we will be electing a chairman or chair and vice chair for the coming 12 months. And first, we will elect a chairperson, and we will distribute the ballots now. At this time, it's my pleasure to announce that Mr. Tim Foster has been elected chairman for the coming year. And I will now turn the, um, turn the meeting back over to Chairman Foster for election of vice chair.
Thank you, Mr. Smitherman. I appreciate it. I thank you for your, for your votes and confidence. And at this time, Mr. DeSelm will pass out the ballots for vice chairman.
Mr. Chairman, it's my pleasure to announce that Commissioner Robin Knapp has been reelected as vice chair for the coming 12 months.
Thank you, Mr. Smitherman. Congratulations, vice chair. At this time, we will acknowledge our elected officials that are with us this morning. Mayor and mayor-elect Pete Parnean from Holly Ridge, our town alderman from North Topsail Beach, and mayor-elect, which will become mayor of North Topsail Beach tomorrow, Rick Grant. And we also have Mr. Wayne Herbert, councilman or commissioner-elect for the town of Swansboro as well. And then Solon Water, Mr. Rob Johnson is with us this morning as well. And this morning, we also have our sheriff, Chris Thomas, and our register of deeds, Ms. Omega Jarman. And I hope I don't overstep sheriff. But ladies and gentlemen, this board and all of Onslow County's thoughts and prayers are out for our sheriff and his family, as he just recently lost his, his father, Mr. Wilbur Thomas, which was a fixture in the community, serving with the Onslow County Sheriff's Office, the Jones County Sheriff's Office, and with the Albert J. Ellis Airport. So a family of service, someone that is just recognizable throughout Onslow County is gone, but his legacy continues to live on in Onslow County with Sheriff Chris Thomas, who embodies everything from Mr. Wilbur Thomas as we, as he continues to move forward as the sheriff of Onslow County. I know that without a doubt, that man was very proud of his son Christopher. So our thoughts and prayers are for you, sheriff. With that being said, we'd like to ask everyone in attendance to please set your cell phones to silent or vibrate mode. And our first item this morning is the adoption of the agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, hearing none. Agenda has been adopted. Item four is approval of items on the consent agenda. If there's any items that any commissioner liked to have removed and placed on the agenda, now is the time to do so. If not, we ask for a motion to approve. Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, hearing none. Motion carries. We'll move right to item five, which is a little history, I think, in the making. A presentation of the Onslow County Government and Coastal Carolina Community College Annual Operating and Capital Funding Agreement. Right now, we ask that representatives, all of us, this board, to come down to the table along with the Board of Trustees and Mr. Hedley and his team to come down to the, to the table for a signing on that agreement. Did we want to share any further on that agreement before we do that, Mr. Smitherman?
Yes, sir. For the public's interest, the Board of Commissioners set a goal in their strategic plan over, well, about a year ago, and it wanted to afford the Board of Trustees of the Community College with the same level of known conditions and respect and appropriate funding commitment as this board has done with the Onslow County school system for many years. So the financial staff of both organizations got together and created a formula that will adequately fund the annual operating and the annual capital maintenance requirements of the Community College with an unknown and unending relationship. So this is a, an agreement that will continue as the Onslow County school system has and should give the Board of Trustees and the president of the Community College the confidence necessary to plan for their future, knowing that resources will be coming to take care of their campus. So thank you, Mr. Foster, for allowing me the opportunity to explain the details of that item.
We'll all meet at the table. Mr. Village Guy, opportunity to speak if he chooses to do so. And Mr. Guy has never refused an opportunity.
Could we vote?
I may be the same way. That does run in the family. But anyway, I do not have a lot to say, except that we greatly appreciate all the efforts that have been put forth. We've met a few times to try to get this all established so it will benefit the community. That's what the college does. And we're striving to, to provide all the support that we can to all the businesses in Onslow County, and we thank you guys very much, all your efforts. We appreciate it. We appreciate the college and what, all, all of what it does in our community. And President, Mr. Hedley and I always joked back in the 1980s, as I was coming through junior high and high school, the slogan was foresee your future, Coastal Carolina Community College. Ms. Waley is back there nodding her head because she remembers foresee your future. And I think this is the, the opportunity that we've all been waiting for, to foresee that future and continue funding on a plan that's, that's going to be there for hopefully in perpetuity and continue moving forward that way because we have the number one Community College in Onslow County. And what it provides for our community is priceless. And just historically speaking, A.D. Guy and Harold Foster, two guys that Mr. Guy here and I know very well, worked together on lots of things. So I think this is just a great opportunity to sign these papers here, continuing funding for Coastal Carolina Community College. Thank you, Commissioner Davis. Absolutely the best community college in Onslow County. The Coastal is the best community college in the state of North Carolina. Again, I thank you for all the representatives of the Board of Trustees that were here with us this morning and those that worked with Kevin Patterson and Onslow County in developing this, this agreement. So we'll move forward with smiles on our faces and continued success of our greatest, one of our greatest resources, Coastal Carolina Community College. Now we'll move into the next phase, where the board offers the public opportunity to speak during the meeting. Comments should be limited to no more than five minutes and may be on any issue upon which the Board of Commissioners has control. In accordance with the board's adopted rules of procedure, commissioners shall reserve responses, if any, for the commissioner comment period on the agenda. So public comments. Mr. Smitherman, do we have anyone signed up this morning?
Yes, we do. The first speaker is Kevin Rouse.
Good morning. Kevin Rouse, former chief of Back Swamp Volunteer Fire Department, 20 years. I've met with you several times. I'm sure you're familiar with me now. You know what I want to talk about. I want to talk about the volunteer fire service. First of all, I'm going to approach you, as I always will, with respect, because you deserve respect in your positions. I want to start out by, I've hit a lot in the past on the history of these organizations. I'm going to start by saying, these organizations are community-oriented, organized, and belong to each and every community that they came out of. I've talked a lot about history. The thing that stands out with me and a lot of the other former volunteers, current volunteers, I know you were handed Bear Creek Fire Department. It was pretty much thrown at you. But the thing that a lot of people don't see is the history. A lot of it was thrown to the wayside, destroyed. I know this personally. I'm not here to make up any falsehoods. I'm here to be honest with you, and always will be when I approach you. I have learned that some of that history is in private hands. Not a lot, but some, that knew the importance of that history. With that being said, when this study was brought about, it was explained as a volunteer first responder master plan. Well, when you name something, most of the time, you pretty much know what it is. That's just my Back Swamp theory. But the, the idea that volunteers and first responders, county first responders, which I totally believe in, settle on that committee. But it's like, the education level is a little smaller. I assure you today that 50 years ago, 36 hours, in which I think is still the state requirement to be an active insured fireman, whether it be volunteer or first, first responder. There's no classes that are separate. They take the same classes, through the same instructors, get their test, pass the test, get their certifications from the state fire marshal's office. There's the only difference, one gets paid, one does not. Volunteers don't ask for anything. They do it out of the love of their hearts. And there's still a lot of good volunteers out there. What, what most of the organizations are afraid of now is what this study's going to reveal. And they're sailing in dark waters. Trust me, I'm telling you the truth. I talk to them all the time. It's almost as if the, in fact, I've got a good theory to tell you, and it happened right here at Burton Park while I was chief. We had a ISO survey to get recertified. And the, the representative there, we were talking about some of the state fire marshal's policies, that they could be taken several different ways, that it's just a matter of interpretation. And as most departments are here in this county, it's based on rural water supply with tankers that haul water to the scene. And these tankers are going to spill some water. And we discussed it and threw it back and forth. And he looked down at the mud, and he looked at me and laughed, and he says, it's as clear as mud. That's kind of the way each and every of these agencies feel right now, today. They're sailing in uncharted waters. And I just hope and pray that each of y'all will make a decision that will be for the good. The taxpayers of Onslow County, I promise you, all the county contributions that have gone through the years have got one of the best fire services in the state of North Carolina. And I don't think that's any stretch of the imagination. Thank you for your time. Hope to see you again. God bless.
Thank you, Mr. Rouse. Mr. Smitherman?
Yes, sir. The next speaker is Ari Reckwitz.
Before you pat yourselves too hard on the back for the municipal election, acknowledge that less than 11% of registered voters participated. Registration is still low for the county, and many registered voters were confused about whether they had any contests on their ballot. Regardless of the diligent work of the Board of Elections, it's difficult to consider the results of any election with such low turnout legitimate. People need improved access to voting resources, including information about candidates and contests, and to provide it, the Board of Elections needs improved support from both voters and county government. I'll come back to that next time. Since you prefer retributive justice to restorative, and I haven't learned how to enact restorative justice with people who deny the harm their actions cause, I will invoke your myth of meritocracy. The board's empathy card has been revoked until such time as you earn it back. Even when I feel empathy for you, I will not express it. And to invoke your own stories, what you are doing is not what Jesus would do. Jesus would tear down your cruel sign and your safety barriers from the people you serve and wash my feet in front of you to remind you what empathy looks like. I may not share your claimed faith, but I understand it better than quite a few professed believers. Like any other tool, how you use your faith and knowledge matters. To be more specific about a point I made about the sign before, when I worked with a transcription service run by a Jewish family, we did not type out the full word "God" as a sign of respect. I'm especially concerned about how tools like the property assessment and license plate camera networks can be used for warrantless surveillance. Onslow County, do you really trust local authorities to use these tools wisely, effectively, and compassionately? Remember the vital, the vital difference between efficient and effective. Visit ssd.eff.org to learn more about how we have sacrificed our privacy and autonomy to whiny billionaires by privileging obedience and convenience over curiosity and compassion, and what you can do to break the cycle of abuse through surveillance self-defense. The board clearly forgets I don't have to share your physical space to listen to you repeat flawed logic and deny evidence. These meetings are posted on YouTube, and I have the privilege right now to curl up in a blanket in a dark, quiet room to review your nonsense instead of risking what's left of my freedom disrupting your meeting when you demonstrate that you refuse to learn and grow by repeating arguments I have previously deconstructed as logically invalid. A privilege that should be a right. Homes for all, not affordable housing no one can afford. And I would recommend an ASL interpreter at these meetings. I'd slow my pace for that level of inclusion, but YouTube captioning can keep up and provide a transcript. I hope Elliot was not present at those meetings, because I usually respect what he has to say. But you all deluded yourselves again last meeting on an issue it's too cruel to agree to disagree on. The United American Indians of New England shared my message better than I can on the National Day of Mourning, which many of us commemorate, instead of the white supremacist celebration of genocide and slavery so many of you participated in last week. Visit uain.org for links to the videos and more details. I also hope that was a pre-prepared comment someone coerced Elliot into and not how he would have responded if he had listened, if he had really listened to the traumatic encounter I revealed just before he spoke. The cruelty of the first commissioner to speak and the chair are patterned behavior I can roll my eyes at in the dark, where I can delude myself, this is all a nightmare, and I will wake up in a kinder world. Elliot's cruelty, though, was an utter shock. But I'm slow, and I can't adjust my own speeches that quickly, so I forgive you, Elliot, and I hope you learn and grow from some research and reflection in a way of giving up hoping most of the board will do. Some people do listen and thank me and treat me with respect. I do this work in solidarity with them, and I do it very differently depending on my circumstances at any given time. I cannot effectively consistently access the resources I need to do the work well. But I do the best I can without killing people, like the one who added insult to injury, saying, "I need help." I've been asking you directly for the help I need for a year, and you keep saying no. Again, not a threat, just a reminder. We can believe in and respect collective consciousness without thinking of it as a god. We can respect and strive to communicate with our ancestors and members of species beyond our own without thinking of them as gods. And we can even believe in gods without worshiping. We can choose to defy unjust deities, just as we defy unjust policies. I am not denying that your storybook contains elements of history or wisdom. I am demonstrating the cruelty of you favoring your own belief system in public spaces as that action causes harm and creates unnecessary division within and among communities. If anyone watching is also secular and seeking support, or any people of faith want to be better allies, openlysecular.org lists organizations and their websites in the Opening Minds, Changing Hearts resource, pages 30 to 31. I hope in my rage I misunderstood something last time, because I do not believe for one second the number of children needing foster or adoptive services in this county is as low as 13. Perhaps that's all the county will acknowledge or budget for, but that's not the same.
Mr. Smitherman?
That is the last speaker for this public comment period.
Thank you, sir. So we'll move into item seven, public hearings. We have two this morning, and we'll start with the hearing for 117 Peggy's Trace Rezoning. And Mr. Metcalf, come on up for a presentation of these items.
Good morning, Chairman, Vice Chairman, and County Commissioners. The first item before the board is the 117 Peggy's Trace Rezoning, period Z, 2025, number 26. The applicant is Onslow County Planning and Development Department, and the owner is Horizons East LLC. An overview of the requested change, the property is highway business, and we're proposing to go to residential five. One tax map number in question, 772D-75. It's located at 117 Peggy's Trace and is in the Stumpsont Township. The rezoning area is the entire parcel at .28 acres. The existing uses of the property is vacant, but the Peggy's Trace subdivision is residential in nature. This is a staff-initiated rezoning. Staff worked to get to the 16 properties that are currently zoned highway business, proposed to go to residential five. They have been highway business, but that does not support residential uses. However, we are required by North Carolina General Statute 160D-601 to have the authorization of each property owner if they're to be rezoned. So staff efforts were to get the 16 properties on board to include the HOA property. Unfortunately, we were only able to get one applicant to sign on. This is a property we've tried this effort before, and we circled back again. So that is why there's only one property, is because we tried to get 16. But unfortunately, we're not able to get those property owners on board. Water serving the property is an eight-inch on Wassaw Water Main on Peggy's Trace, and there's also a sewer there, both gravity and force main as well. Turkey Creek serves the property with an ISO rating of four. Our most recent traffic count from 2023 on Highway 172 was 8,800 trips. Staff estimates the capacity there just below 15,000. The school serving the property are Dixon Elementary, Dixon Middle, and Dixon High School. Staff estimates no impact on the school system because it's only one lot, and the density is the same between highway business and R5. Here you can see the front part of Peggy's Trace is highway business. The rear portion or Phase Two of Peggy's Trace is R5. Our five designation was given to them by the county in 2021. They were rezoned at that time by the county, but we were not able to rezone Phase One. So we retried this effort. Here comparing the two zoning districts, highway business purposes to accommodate regional-scale commercial uses. Residential structures are allowed by special use permit, and again, it's designed to promote commercial uses. While residential five is our most dense residential While residential five, as our most dense residential district, has comparable densities to highway business, and its purpose is to provide for moderate and high-density single-family as well as multifamily where we have infrastructure to support that. The comprehensive plan designates the area as the village use. This is a use that was carried over from the Sneed's Ferry Community Plan in 2015, and it's designed to create kind of a hub for Sneed's Ferry. So that designation is centered around four corners, kind of stretches out. We'll look at that in a map in a minute. It's designed to predominantly allow for retail office and service uses and a variety of housing. Again, it's to create a village center for this Sneed's Ferry area. Here you can see those properties are in the orange category, which is that village category, and in transitions to waterside community as we get closer to the new river. Look at environmental concerns. There are no regulated flood zones, no blue line streams on the properties. Any wetlands will be required to be submitted with any sort of development applications. It can be reasonable and in the public interest because it's supported by our future land use map, as well as we would not deem this an appropriate location for commercial. Horizon 2040 would not. So therefore, requesting the change to residential density is more appropriate, as well as also we want to encourage economic development as well in 6.3 in appropriate locations much closer to four corners and not within a residential development. November 6, the Planning Board met and voted unanimously to recommend approval of the request. One citizen did attend, and he had questions about the land and the future use of the property. Came to staff's attention when a single-family building permit application was submitted. And so that is the future use of the property, is a home. And as well, he had other questions about a nearby development of townhomes. No military impacts were presented during that planning board meeting. And the chairman's remarks are, "There's one lot, .28 acres, zoned highway business, and should be R5," to be consistent with the current use and proposed use. Zoned HB was in the past and is non-conforming at this time. The Planning Board found this to be consistent with the comprehensive plan and the future land use map. Here you can see the residential development that is Peggy's Trace. The HOA lot is what contains the stormwater ponds. Again, it's currently vacant with that proposed use of a single-family structure. Here you see where we noticed for today's public hearing. A little bit of wider look there at our three-foot-by-four-foot sign that we put on every property. So it is respectfully requested the Board of Commissioners consider the proposed zoning map amendment of P. 2025, number 26, and adopt a statement of consistency for the amendment regarding the comprehensive plan, and authorize the chairman to sign the necessary documents on behalf of the county. This concludes the staff presentation, Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Metcalf. We will now open the public hearing, and Mr. Smithman, we have anyone signed up?
Yes, sir, we do not.
All right. Just a final call to the audience that would like to speak on this rezoning. Then we will close the public hearing at this time and bring it to the Commissioners. We have a motion and a second discussion.
Carter, I'm sorry. So Horizons East, I'm trying to understand the timeline. Horizons East applied for a residential building permit, and because it was HB, you couldn't approve the building permit. That's how this came about?
Yes, sir. So and I'll go all the way back to 2021. We identified this as a property in this area to be rezoned. At that time, we did not have the developers' authority to be able to do that in 2021 when we rezoned 179 neighborhoods, which was the back half of this portion. So we then, when this building permit application came back up from Horizons East, we were not able to issue it because it required a special use permit. So we figured the time was right to try again because it is in the public interest, based off the comprehensive plan, to have more of a residential zoning. So yes, sir, to answer that specifically, it was a building permit application that brought this back up again.
So the contact with the owners in the subdivision, was that just like a letter that you sent to them?
We sent letters, and we heard from nearly every owner. Our staff were on the phone for hours and hours with them to even include meetings with them to talk through kind of the benefits to being rezoned to residential five. And ultimately, they decided that they rather use their HOA covenants to preclude any sort of commercial uses there on the property. But that's not something the county can engage in. We don't enforce individual HOA covenants. So that's ultimately, and though we explained to them, your neighbor could just demolish their structure and apply for a strip center, there's not much that could be done.
Right. And if their house is damaged by storm or fire, they won't be able to rebuild?
Yeah, it's a non-conforming use, and that goes through Article V of the zoning ordinance. So you can continue to replace what you had, but you can't expand it without getting a special use permit. So we really tried to explain all the different benefits, but unfortunately, only one property owner took us up on it.
So as a follow-up question, then, just out of curiosity, what were the contradictions to the rezoning, then?
The only thing we were heard were that they just didn't want to change. I mean, we could not get any sort of concrete things or refutes from any of the owners. To be honest, Commissioner, I'm unsure of the downside for them because it's at no cost, and it allows the county to protect them and for zoning to do what zoning is designed to do. So there was nothing that we could have really, I mean, we tried.
I can tell you did. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. Mr. Metcalf, come on back up. We'll talk about a little water-dependent accessory structures.
Yes, sir. So the zoning ordinance text amendment for water-dependent accessory structures, ZOTA 2025, number three. The applicant is also the Onslow County Planning and Development Department. The Onslow County Planning and Development staff have submitted an application to request the text amendment to Section 8.3, Table 8-3, which is our detached residential accessory structures requirement. We wish to exempt water-dependent accessory structures from the limitations set forth in Note 7. So simply put, Note 7, that residential zoning districts, they're listed on the screen, must have a principal structure before an accessory structure. You have to have a home before you can build something else in the property. With water lots in the county, oftentimes folks want to build their dock or a water-dependent structure or maybe a boat lift, a pier before they build their home. They're in the process of it, but maybe they want to do that first. And so we've had this a number of times over the years, and we usually try to work with folks, but we just figured it's a lot easier for us to clean up our books and to allow folks this flexibility to be able to put a dock on their lot before they put their home up. Because sometimes the setbacks based off docks with the different regulations, you kind of need to figure that out before you figure out your home's placement. So that is the requested change, which is respectfully requested. For the Board of Commissioners, consider the proposed zoning ordinance text amendment of ZOTA 2025, number three.
I'm moved.
Second.
Got to have a public hearing.
Oh, that's right.
Got to have a public hearing for that one?
You misled me.
I'm sorry.
And we also need a
It seems so easy on this one.
An adoption of a statement of consistency for the amendment and authorize the chairman to sign the necessary documents on behalf of the county.
Thank you, Mr. Metcalf. At this time, we will open the public hearing. Mr. Smithman, we have anyone signed up to speak?
Yes, sir.
Opportunity for anyone to speak on this rezoning. Hearing none, then we will close the public hearing and bring it back. So we'll start here.
So moved.
And second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? I just have one. Does this... We have someone that has started building their home. Home's being built. And they're able to get the garage unattached or storage building or another building started. Is there something in that that they're allowed to get their occupancy for that larger detached garage or storage building as long as they've started building the home? And I ask that because I had someone that we tried to get that done for a year ago, maybe, or something, and they were close to moving into their home but not there yet. Is there verbiage in here that can address that, or can we add verbiage to address that with home that's already in the process of being built or something? Hopefully you read my mind.
Yes, sir. It is the policy of our department, it's not in the ordinance, but it's our policy that we work with folks in that way. So if you want to build a shed before you're building your home, we allow you to concurrently submit those building permit applications, but we don't issue the certificate of satisfaction for the shed until we give you the certificate of occupancy for the home. So essentially, your shed can't pass your home in terms of how they're being built, and we can finalize them together, but we don't issue the shed before the home. We want to make sure folks are able to get the home. But if it is the desire of the chairman and the board, we can look into adding language into the ordinance if necessary for that.
I think at some point, that may be something we want to look at doing. If someone's halfway through their home and their detached garage is ready, let's go ahead and give them that certificate because I don't think anyone's going to
I would think there needs to be a timeline.
Right, yes.
Because if you don't, people will just build and
Right.
Yes, that's why we usually don't allow them to pass the inspection, so you can do roughens together and you can do your finals together. But we could certainly look at that and bring that back to the Board.
I would agree.
Yep, thank you. Thank you.
I could agree with that.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the ordinance signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. So we'll move to item eight, general items. Mitch Sprunger, our Airport Director, will present this item on the Airport Runway Extension Program and the Highway Relocation, RS&amp;H Construction Administration. I was going to come up with something for RS&amp;H, but I figured I better not. Go ahead, Mr. Sprunger.
Chairman, Vice Chairman, Commissioners, happy Monday to you all. For your consideration today is Amendment Number Two to Task Order Number Three with RS&amp;H Engineering, which includes Construction Administration and Resident Inspector Services for our runway extension and highway relocation project. The original intent of this task order was for preparatory work, such as pre-bidding and design services for this project. Within this amendment number two, you'll be approving a proposal for residential inspectors that will ensure the project meets NCDOT and FAA construction standards, as well as coordination efforts with our subcontractors, which includes electrical and water companies for the relocation of their utilities. The work in this amendment is slated for completion within 492 calendar days, and as it was brought up in the last Commissioners' meeting, this item and the previous items are fully funded with state capital infrastructure fund grant dollars and NCDOT funds. So no cost to the taxpayer in Onslow County. And I just also want to say it's very exciting for me to bring you these items related to this project. It's been a long time coming, and I anticipate this will bring tremendous value to the citizens in Onslow County and the long-term economic development of OAJ. So it's very exciting for me. And so with that, it is respectfully requested that the Board of Commissioners approve the RS&amp;H Amendment Number Two to Task Order Three in the amount of $2,446,311, and authorize the chairman to sign the documents on behalf of the county.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yeah, Mitch, as always, I like to get that clarification on that $2 million and where it's coming from so that the residents of Onslow County realize what a great deal that you are out getting for us. So if you would, please explain that for us.
Yes, as I mentioned, the primary funding source is SCIF dollars, which is an NCDOT grant specifically for this project. And then in addition to that, there's also some other NCDOT funds we can tap into, their airport improvement program dollars. And then we can also utilize what are called passenger facility charges. So those are generated out of the airport combined with the grant dollars. No taxpayer impact for this project.
And you're competing against RDU, Charlotte Mettenberg, all the big guys you're out competing and winning, so thank you.
Thank you.
Any other discussion?
That's Mitch, that's $2,446,131, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. You said 300. I just want to make sure it's clear. Thank you.
No further discussion. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sprunger. Item B, Carrie Sanders, Assistant County Manager, will present on Heinz Farm Park and Stables fee schedule.
Good morning, Chairman, Vice Chair, and Commissioners. The item you have before you this morning is to do a modification to the current Onslow County fee schedule. Our cabins out at the Heinz Farm Park and Stables currently rent for $75 per evening. And while this provides a unique and affordable lodging option, we do have an opportunity to improve rentals, the volume, and utilization. So we are requesting to offer a reduced rate of $37.50 per night or a 50% discount to any North Carolina local government employees. So this reduced rate is really to promote stronger relationships with our statewide partners, as well as maximize the use of an Onslow County asset. So it is respectfully requested that the Board of Commissioners approve and authorize a modification to the Heinz Farm Park and Stables fee schedule to implement a 50% discounted rate of $37.50 per night for the cabin rentals for all North Carolina local government employees.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion?
I would only, oh, go ahead.
No, I do have a question. Are local government officials and local government employees the same thing?
Yes. So it's, they're all
I've seen both those descriptive terms.
Would this include our teachers? Because I know that they sort of get paid by us a little bit, but does it include the teachers?
Yeah, they're currently, yeah, they're county employees.
Okay. I just want to make sure. Thank you.
It would also include our law enforcement officers. So this request originally came from law enforcement because they do some annual training and wanted to use this as an opportunity to rent the cabins.
All right. And I have to ask, since our community college is sitting here, does it include them?
That's correct.
Or could we get it to include them?
That's correct.
Their local government?
Yeah.
This all came about, Chris Thomas brought this to our attention probably a year ago. Some of the instructors that were coming in and out there were trying to get them a better discount of, you know, coming in to teach and whatnot for us.
Good.
Excellent.
Any more questions? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Sanders.
Thank you.
Item C is a resolution for a low-impact development statement. Mr. Smithman will present this item. Mr. Smithman?
Yes, sir. For the public's benefit, the Board of Commissioners, as a board and quite a few members individually, as well as staff members collectively and individually, have been discussing the impact that our development has on water quality. And water quality is important for our livelihood, for our economics, for our fishing industry, for tourism. And we know, the Board knows, that there are a lot of projects going to be built over the next 10 years that will come with impact, environmental impact, particularly the stormwater runoff. Most of these facilities will be school buildings. So we have jointly developed with our school partner and in workshops with the Board of Commissioners, a resolution to adopt low-impact development strategies for responsible stormwater management. These are for public-funded facilities. This does not regulate the private market, does not regulate the housing market or any commercial activities, just local government-funded facilities. And Mr. Chairman, I'd be happy to read this resolution if you'd like.
I think it would be appropriate. Yes, sir.
Okay. Resolution 25015, Low-Impact Development Statement of Support for Responsible Stormwater Management. Whereas Onslow County is deeply committed to protecting and enhancing water quality through responsible stormwater management practices, and whereas Onslow County is developing at a rapid rate and is expected to have a population of over 280,000 in the year 2050, and whereas Onslow County via the Onslow County Board of Education, Coastal Carolina Community College, and the Board of Commissioners is embarking on many capital facility projects in the coming decade in response to population growth. And whereas Onslow County recognizes the vital role clean water plays in the quality of life for its residents of life for its residents, stewardship and health of the environment, and the productivity and sustainability of the local economy, and whereas Onslow County strives to lead by example in environmental stewardship through implementing runoff reduction, pollution prevention, and sustainable practices on new county financed facilities, including but not limited to those outlined in the attached exhibit, and whereas Onslow County is committed to protecting our community and future generations by setting the standard for responsible stormwater management. And now therefore be it resolved by the Onslow County Board of Commissioners that new and significantly renovated public facilities funded by Onslow County government shall seek to implement low-impact development stormwater strategies where fiscally responsible, effective, and reasonable. And further be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners hereby request that the governing bodies of the Onslow County School System and the Coastal Carolina Community College likewise consider adoption of a similar resolution as a statement of support to implement low-impact development strategies, adopted the first day of December 2025.
Thank you, Mr. Smitherman. If we have a motion?
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? We'll say Mr. Rob Johnson with Soul and Water Conservation is here with us today, and I think he's got a smile on his face, because he's worked hard on this with others in the community, as well as Riverkeeper and everyone involved. So I think this is a good day as we continue to try and manage stormwater runoff. It's a lot to say stormwater runoff and the impact it has and how we can mitigate that as best we can. All in favor of the motion signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. We'll move to item nine, appointments for the Onslow County Planning Board, and Mr. DeSails will present this item for us.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. As you know, the planning board works with the Planning and Development Department staff to ensure the orderly growth and development of land in the county and the proper administration of land use regulations. The board consists of seven members, one appointee from each of the five townships in Onslow County, one appointee who may be recommended by developers, and one appointee who may be recommended by one or more environmental groups. At this time, the environmental category is vacant. There are two applications that are with the clerks for that one position, which would expire on July 31, 2028. Those applications were submitted by Mr. Matt Ray and Mr. William Sanders. There's ballots that have been given out to you, and we'll collect those and announce their winner.
Okay. Voice of Sanders. Buchanan Sanders. Carpenter Sanders. Davis Sanders. Foster Sanders. Ab Sanders. Everybody say it.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. William Sanders has received the approval of the board for that July 31, 2028 appointment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DeSails. We'll now move to manager's comments as he's finishing up. We did not have any consent agenda items, and we'll move to item 11 with Mr. Smitherman.
Thank you. As this is our last opportunity to speak to the public and meet in this format this year, I want to spend a moment reflecting on 2025. I think it has been an ambitious year with lots of accomplishments. The Board of Commissioners adopted its strategic plan in the beginning of this year and then adopted a budget six months later that has activated the strategic plan. So we went from 18 months of planning to now we're in implementation phase. And if you'll recall, we have a planned accomplishments card that all of our employees received, and you received, and some of you are using with our citizenry to educate on what we're up to this year. There's about 20 to 25 items on there that are directly related to the strategic plan that are already accomplished or to be accomplished by June 30 of 2026. The board has positioned the organization to be prepared for what's coming, that 280,000 people that will be here in 25 years. And that is what's driving the strategic plan and the board's vision of being ahead of this growth and making sure that we can handle it instead of responding to it afterwards is admirable. And, you know, frankly, the employees of the organization are energized by it. We are grateful to all of our folks. We spend a lot of time communicating, as one of your priorities was this year, is to improve communication. We are not only doing that with the public, but we are doing that internally. And it is... The response by our employees has been tremendous. They have a sense of renewed purpose, they understand your vision, and they think about it and talk about it every day. So thank you very much for the guidance that you've given us this year. We will be meeting with all of our employees next week in our annual all-employee meeting, where we will be reviewing where we are at this point in the year and where we will be six months from now, as another effort to make sure all 1,500 of us are rowing in the same direction. And finally, I'd like to say I hope everyone had a great Thanksgiving, I hope everyone has a great holiday season, certainly looking forward to this month and, you know, reassessing where we are and coming back after the holidays energized to do your work. And I congratulate the chair and vice chair on their re-elections and look forward to working with you both the coming year. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Smitherman. So we'll stay right in line. We'll go alphabetically this morning, so we'll start with Commissioner Bennett. Oh, because of the sign.
Oh, yeah. I just wanted to take a moment to thank Mr. Rouse. We appreciate your comments, we appreciate your service to our volunteer fire departments. I just want to emphasize again, the purpose of the Fire Service Strategic Plan is to learn how we need to support our volunteer fire departments over the next 10 years or more. And we all, I think everybody sitting at this dais wants to support our volunteer fire departments and keep them in business for as long as they can possibly stay in business. We appreciate the history there. Would also want to mention the stormwater resolution. Several of us have been interested in the concern with water quality in Onslow County, and I think this is a great start. Maybe it'll encourage some of our private developers to look at some of the options for stormwater retention and usage instead of just pouring asphalt or concrete. Yeah, maybe it'll help. I thank both of the applicants for the planning board. I know them both, I appreciate them and their willingness to volunteer, and congratulate William Sanders on his election. I want to congratulate our chair and vice chair for their reelection. And finally, we're on such a great course for the next year. Onslow County, this board, we want to be the community of choice in coastal North Carolina. And I think that we've set the stage to make that happen, and I hope to continue to work toward that for the next year. Thank you for being here.
Thank you, Commissioner Bennett. Commissioner Buchanan?
I hope you'll bear with me a little bit. I'm gonna be a little bit long tonight. I'm normally not long. I'm pretty short about things. First, I want to thank Coastal Carolina Community College, David Headley, and your staff and the Board of Trustees working together with us. But one of the things is, you know, we lost Sarah Beckstrom over last week sometime during National Guard, along with Andrew Wolf being wounded really bad. And you know that my background is pretty intense since 19... I want to say 1969, I think it was. I started out in law enforcement as a sheriff's posse, mounted deputy. Then I became a deputy sheriff, then I became a police officer under Jacksonville. I still hold reserve position with the Jacksonville Police Department. But there's something a lot of us don't understand, and a lot of us that know more about this, and I've been very fortunate to be at the college since 1990, run the police academy I don't know how many times, David, I've done that for you and the community. But there's a poem that an individual officer from Dallas, his name is Dallas Pruitt, from Winston-Salem Police Department. And I believe in this and have believed in it all my life and all the times that I've been able to be a representative of the college, to speak. And one of the things is, we carry on, and I hope you bear with me with this, we kiss our families goodbye, and most of us go out into the world that a few of you will ever see or know anything about. Statistically shows that half of us will one day come home to an empty house and a note saying goodbye, "I can't take your job anymore," but we carry on. We know we have a job with one of the highest divorce-suicide and mental illness rates in the world, but we carry on. You curse us when we stop you for speeding. You weren't there two hours ago and we covered the body of a three-year-old child killed by a speeding car, but we carry on. We investigate the murders, rapes, and robberies and have to watch the victims' families weep in court when a judge has to release a suspect on a small technicality, but we carry on. We see families wiped out by accidents, then we listen as the person who did it is fined $100 for drunk driving and given a limited driving privilege, so he can go back and forth to work and church on Sunday, but we carry on. We know what it is to be hit unprovoked. You probably get a fine in court for assault. We know that if we hit you unprovoked, we could lose our jobs and everything we own for police brutality, but we carry on. The uniform is not armor. It won't stop bullets, knives, bricks, or sticks. We have gone in burning buildings, burning cars, icy waters, tried to save lives. Some of us lose ours in the process, but we carry on. We are part of mentor, problem solver, professional driver, weapons expert, guidance, and marriage counselor. We are part of analysts, lawyers, firearms, and doctors, and sometimes boxer and wrestler. Does your job require this much? And even sometimes more? I doubt it. We know all of this, but we carry on. We're not expected to be one of the thing. We're all human beings, but sometimes though we forget and act like them, we get angry. We say or do things we shouldn't. Please forgive us, but we carry on. It means a lot to me, but that's what public safety is all about. That's what public safety is all about, and I want us to remember our National Guards people, because they're doing the job that I had to do many years ago, and thank God I don't have to do it today, but I'm going to teach the individuals to be good officers. I want to thank you for everybody for being here.
Thank you, Commissioner Buchanan. Commissioner Carpenter?
Couple of things. I just wanted to kind of capitalize on what our manager already said, which is, I feel like the county is really ending 2025 on such a high note, and I'm very excited that the strategic... Well, it's a hard word to say sometimes. Strategic plan is moving forward with the things that we had intended to have happen. I think a couple of great examples of that are the funding formula with Coastal Carolina Community College. I know that Mr. Heatherly must be breathing a sigh of relief and new air, along with the rest of the board there. I think it's very exciting for you to be able to move forward and plan instead of react to the growth that is coming. It's definitely one of the jewels of our county, I think. In addition to that, the airport, I love our airport so much. Mitch, thank you so much for moving forward just diligently with the plans and changes that are coming through for this airport expansion. It is going to be such an amazing asset. I mean, more of an asset to Onslow County once it's done, and I love that we have green lights moving forward on all of that, and that truly is another jewel of Onslow County, I think. And lastly, I just wanted to say, Rob Johnson, congratulations. I know that you were beating this drum early on, and contrary to a lot of people that were pushing back and maybe even making fun of your idea, here we are today, doing something that I think is hopefully the tip of the iceberg with what we can do in the future for stormwater in our area and maybe be a leader in the state for that kind of thing. It's very exciting, so congratulations again. Thank you for your hard work. And lastly, just Merry Christmas to everyone. This is one of my favorite times of year. It's a tough time of year, I'm not going to lie, for me, and simultaneously joyful. So I just wish all of you just a joyous time with your friends and family, and be careful and create great memories. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Carpenter. Commissioner Davis?
Yes, sir. First, I want to, Paul, thank you for the poem that was needed, and thank you for all the public safety and your history and how you've served not only our country, but locally as well. So thank you. Mr. Rouse, thank you. I always appreciate when you come and you speak. You're passionate, but yet professional, and you bring a lot of facts to the table. So thank you. To the college folks, thank you, guys. David, I don't think you get enough credit in the community for what you've done and what our community college brings to the table. You got who's who in Onslow County on your board to do great things, and you got really smart and dynamic people around you to do great things, and that's a true sign of a leader. You're willing to have people smarter than you, better looking than you. No, I'm just kidding, just kidding. But just thank you for what you do and what you've accomplished and with your team. Thank you. Rob Johnson, man, squeaky wheel, right? Just keep up the great work. And to elected officials anywhere that are listening right now, you know, so often elected official will be told you can't do something, that's out of your purview, that's not your... dot, 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 go down the line. And, but you kept influencing folks, you kept working with people, you kept showing the facts, and here you are. You've accomplished, I think, a major milestone, and I think there's more to come, so just thank you for your hard work. And yeah, so I want to thank the staff. It looks like a lot of directors and leaders out here this morning, and you guys have to put up with us, then you have to put up with management, then you have so much work to do during the year that you have to accomplish in the midst of all the chaos that we create, and yet y'all keep a steady pace and keep moving forward and keep making our county better. And here we are at the end of the year, and I would argue against anybody that you guys have made our county better than what it was a year ago. So thank you to all the staff for what y'all do. And finally, Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. Thank you all, and look forward to next year.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Commissioner Pageant?
I didn't know I was going to get to go before Robin. That being said, I want to thank everybody for being here, and first of all, I want to wish everybody Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. I'm proud of our college. We talked about it. I'm standing there, I can remember when the college started at Georgetown, that's where I went. Where our water department is now is where Coastal Carolina started, and it's done well, and I'm proud of each and every one of you that served. And I'm glad that we're getting to a point that we can make things better and easier for everyone. With that being said, Kevin, thank you so much. You're very passionate about it, you have always told the truth. Mr. Rouse has been in volunteer system, I guess, all your life, pretty much. But, you know, strategic plan, I know what the state said about the water was muddy, but I believe at the end of the day, the water start clearing up, and we'll see things better for everybody concerned. We just, people are reluctant to change, including myself. But I think this is going to be better at the end of the day for everybody and every citizen, and hope that everyone will buy into it at the end, where we can get fire trucks as they need them, when they need them, tankers when they need them. Our equipment, some of it's getting old, we have to go back and find the money for it. They're not cheap, as you well know. Fire truck today is over a million dollars, you used to go buy them for $300,000, but them days are gone. But thank you so much for being persistent, and I appreciate your service, not only for volunteer, but to your service that you put in Onslow County, because you retired here, and I thank you. And with that being said, congratulations to our chairman and vice chairman. Do a little better this year, if you would. I appreciate it. But I'm gonna stay on you as long as I can. So, but I do thank everyone for being here. And Rob, soil and water's come a long way. Keep up the good work. I was there for many years, and we're moving and making strides, the betterment for Onslow County. And with that, everyone have a good day. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Pageant. Vice Chairman.[1777.36]
But I'm going to stay on you as long as I can. But I do thank everyone for being here. And Rob, so water's come a long way. Keep up the good work. I was there for many years, and we're moving and making strides, the betterment for Onslow County. And with that, everyone have a good day. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Paget. Vice Chairman.
I appreciate that, Tony. Yeah, I'm speechless, right? Hey, I just want to say a couple of things. Paul was, I don't know if we were reading each other's minds, but I was kind of thinking the same thing with what Paul said. The thing about Sarah Beckham, the National Guardman who was killed, really bothers me. It really does, and it should bother every American in this room. You know, I spent twenty-nine years in federal law enforcement, and prior to that I was a veteran. Paul's talking about getting shot at, responding, and all the stuff that we did, it's true. We had the highest divorce rate, and I know because I'm one of the statistics. And, you know, it's, we do it, we do it for reason, like we do, we go in the military. We do it to serve, you know? And as I look out and I see General Dickerson sitting here, I had the privilege and honor of working with him when I was with NCIS, and he was the commanding general on base, and we had some, we had some times together. But, you know, it bothers me that, and a lot of times politicians are supposed to keep their mouths closed and not voice their opinion. We're supposed to be objective, but you know, enough's enough. We got people shooting or National Guardmen on American soil, okay? And the person who did the shooting was from Afghanistan. He wasn't vetted properly. And so now all the people are blaming that it was a national, an un-American, American wouldn't do that, but the American people are pushing the rhetoric, okay? And I want you to understand that the left is pushing the rhetoric, and I'm going to go on record of saying that. They're pushing this rhetoric. The Seditious Six are pushing this rhetoric. You know, when you have American military members on our soil, let alone cops or anybody else, and you get shot on American soil, I mean, there's something wrong with this country. And I see one of my individuals left because of my comments, and that's fine, but somebody's got to say something about this. Enough is enough in this country. It is pathetic. You know, I don't even know, when I was growing up in the sixties and seventies, you wouldn't even think this way. And that was the height of Vietnam. My dad was a Vietnam vet and a Korean War vet, okay? And, you know, my mother being Asian, not from Vietnam, but being Asian, we took the brunt of the jokes as well, okay? So, you know, when is enough is going to be, is going to be enough in this country? We have this rhetoric going through this country now where you can't tolerate anybody else. If you don't like somebody else, you go out and harm them. You ambush police officers, you ambush National Guardsmen. Are you kidding me? This, you know, I'm passionate about it because I don't really say much about things like this openly. I keep it to myself and I talk with my wife. My wife is more conservative than I am, but it's getting sickening. And it's about time politicians stood up and said what they have to say, whether it's right or left. I mean, you don't do anything to go against the Constitution of the United States or to suggest such wise, or to suggest such is treasonous. You know, and if somebody wants to get mad at me for what Captain Kelly said, you just read between the lines, and he needs to be prosecuted under the UCMJ to the full extent of the law. As far as I'm concerned, he's a traitor. And it is kind of funny, nine months prior to that, Charlie Kirk, who was assassinated, called him out as a traitor. What does that tell you? So it's my earnest hope that, you know, this year that we remember our first responders, our public safety people, our military especially, that are around the world guarding this country. You may not see it, place like Djibouti, okay? We got people all over the place in Saudi Arabia, Kuwait, Japan, Okinawa, Philippines, that you don't even hear about, Korea, where my mother's from. We got people everywhere around this world, serving in the military away from their families, and take a moment to thank these people, whether you're Marine, Coast Guard, you know, we do have Coast Guard that are deployed, especially in Guantanamo Bay, but we have the Air Force people, Army people, National Guardsmen that are deployed, and I'm thankful for this country that we have some strong leadership, and I'll go ahead and say that. We have some strong leadership right now in this country of people that know what we're supposed to be doing and hold to the values and the foundations and the principles of this country, plain and simple. And, you know, if I offend anybody by my remarks that are Democratic or have leftist leanings, oh, well, get used to it. Because anybody knows me, I'm going to call it like I see it, and I'm getting sick of this, watching all this stuff. And I pray that the National Guardsman who's laid up in critical condition survives. I really do. And this individual that they've caught who drove across country from Washington State, you know, as far as I'm concerned, he needs to be, he needs to be punished to the full extent of the law. And take a moment this year to remember those people. Take a moment to thank them, to pray for them. Prayer does work. And pray for them and keep them up in spirits, and never forget the sacrifices that the men, the young Marines that are out here in Camp Lejeune are eighteen, nineteen, twenty years old that volunteered to go in our military. The soldiers in Fayetteville, the Air Force guys out of Seymour Johnson, okay? Coast Guard guys at Fort Fisher, all these people. Remember these people. They volunteered. They weren't drafted. They volunteered to serve their country, and they're serving their country now. And always keep them in your prayers and remember them. And I'm going to let it go at that, you know, because there are some things that Paul said tonight that kind of triggered some things in me. We've suffered, I know Paul has. Paul's a Vietnam vet, Purple Heart winner, and then got shot again in the line of duty as a police officer. So there's some PTSD going around with some of us, okay? We know it. We experience it just like everyone else that's been through the military traumatic event. But I just want to thank you, Paul, for reminding me and what you said today about the public safety. I appreciate that. The second thing is, my severe condolences to Sheriff Thomas and his father. I've known Chris since November of nineteen ninety, when he was a sergeant in Penner County Sheriff's Office, and I was working as an NCIS agent at Camp Lejeune. We worked together, our departments, and we became friends ever since. He's a good man, and we had talked previously before his father's passing about some of the conditions that he was going through, and it's tragic. I've lost my father to Parkinson's and dementia, and I'm going through it right now with my mother-in-law. So, you know, I feel for him. He's a tough man. He's, he's one of the best sheriffs we ever had in this county. And when you see him, offer him your condolences and prayers, please. And the last thing I want to talk about real quick is that, first of all, it's not the last but not least. I want to thank the board members for your vote and confidence, and something I noticed today, which was kind of, I've noticed it before, but we've got seven people up here that we got different opinions. We have meetings, we have closed meetings. Sometimes we yell at each other, sometimes we don't. Sometimes we're mad at each other, sometimes we don't even want to look at each other. But you know what? When it comes down to getting business done, all of us in here are professionals, and we come together. And today, when we were having our closed sessions, you know, we disagreed on certain things, but for the most part, we agreed and we get along, and that's what makes this board unique. And it's one of the finest boards I've seen in a long time with the various opinions that we have, that we're able to keep each other in check, and we're able to be professional enough. And I just want to thank every board member, because I do appreciate your opinions. I appreciate your perspectives, even though I can get big-headed and convinced of my own ways, and then I listen to you a little bit and I go, yeah, maybe they're right. But I just want to thank everybody, and I appreciate the opportunity to serve as your vice chairman again for another year. Other than that, I hope you all have a great Christmas. I hope you take the time to remember your loved ones and to remember the real reason for Christmas and why we celebrate Christmas. And I just hope everybody has a blessed and wonderful holiday season and be safe for a Happy New Year, and hopefully we'll see you next year. God bless. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chairman. First, we'll start right. Mr. Rouse, it's always good to hear from you. One of the most important things that we've got to continue to maintain moving forward with strategic planning and work for our volunteer fire departments is history and the heritage. Every building has history. Every building's based on heritage, and you can't ever forget that. Those, every brick, every hose, every, was built by men and women in those communities. And the history and the heritage of those have to remain intact for them to continue to provide the services that they provide. And I think Mr. Rouse hit on, hit on something that may have missed some of you, is that the volunteer fire, firemen and women, they, they are required to meet the same training standards as the full-time employees, and they meet those training standards while maintaining full-time jobs outside of the volunteer fire department. So the work and effort just to maintain certification is, is, is a tremendous accomplishment to do that while maintaining a full-time job. So we appreciate what you come and share with us and your legacy that you've left there and still have there with Back Swamp. The other part is, you know, they mentioned Mr. Heatherly, and we appreciate everything he does there. We appreciate the fact that you were there when they laid the first brick at Coastal Carolina Community College on Western Boulevard. I think it's about forty-eight years, maybe, I think, that you've been with, with the college. So hats off to your service and what you've done and been a part of building at Coastal, and then your esteemed board trustees and your team that come with you today as well, and the work that's gone in to provide what you provide and the things that you do from, from, from college transfer credit to associate's degrees, to the linemen, to nursing. It's all there. Only thing you have to do is, is go visit, and the opportunities are tremendous at our, at our, and I love to say, our local community college, is the opportunities are tremendous. Two-hundred-and-eighty thousand in thirty more years, Mr. Smitherman? Wow! That's still, I won't even do the math. I asked a couple of years ago why we couldn't get Southwest Airlines to Albert J. Ellis Airport, and the answer was simple. You got to have a million people. Well, I'm going to say this, I hope we never have Southwest Airlines, because we don't need a million people, but we have a great airport that's a great asset. And Mitch, we appreciate you taking the reins and continuing to move us forward and doing the things that, that we can to enhance our, our airport and what it contributes to, to Onslow County. Water quality is always super important on the coast, always imported on the coast, imported everywhere, but really imported on the coast, in particular here in Onslow County, and the efforts that were there, and we appreciate all the efforts, Rob, and our team, to really put that, put that together and really start working, working those efforts to maintaining our water, water quality here. Two, two teams are playing Friday night here in Onslow County. Jacksonville High School, the Cardinals are playing in the Eastern Championship at home. So we wish Coach Bo Williams and the Cardinals good luck, as they are four quarters away from playing for a state championship. And then right around the corner, not very far, maybe a stone's throw, short walking distance to, to Northside High School and the Monarchs that are also playing in the Eastern Championship, but they'll be traveling to Wilson Hunt High School Friday night. They too, four quarters away from playing for a state title. So we wish Coach Kendrick Pollock and the Monarchs luck as they take, take that on Friday night as well. And then last, is I appreciate the opportunity to serve this, this board and this county in the chair position, which some days it's easy, some days not so easy, but the important thing is, is that we continue to figure out a way to move forward and make really good things happen for, for Onslow County. And today, or this morning, was one of those in signing that agreement there. The funding formula with Onslow County Schools intact, and some work is going to be put in, put in that with their capital as well. The strategic plan, Onslow County is moving forward with the efforts and the work that we've done in the last year or so in the compensation of our employees, the, the working conditions, the opportunity for education and certification, merit pay, acknowledging the work that they do and the time that they put in, and that they are, we want to not only recruit, we want to retain, and we want to make sure we keep the best and recruit the best of Onslow County. In all ways, it's, it's tough whenever you see someone that has lost their life senselessly. Onslow County so, so aware of what that loss is, especially when it's the men and women on the Beirut wall, they came in peace. And that's the one thing that we've always got to, got to remember is, is the, the folks that are out there doing the things that they do. They go out there in peace, to maintain that and to take care of our way of life. And I thank those of you that have served, that are, that are here and been a part, Major Dickerson and others. And my brother has always said, "I may not agree with what you say, but I'll fight to the death for your right to say it." And that's the difference in our nation right now, is everybody wants to, to step to violence because they disagree. This nation was built on disagreement, and we have disagreed for, for many, many years. Right around two-hundred-and-fifty years, and a written document, piece of paper, established the Constitution. And I can assure you, when they nailed those windows closed in Philadelphia, they didn't have air conditioning, and they sat in there and they pounded that thing out. They worked on it. They put forth the effort to do what they needed to do to foresee the future of what we needed, and here we are, two-hundred-and-fifty years later. What is it that was said? If we can keep it. We're on the precipice of if we can keep it. Don't let your rights and freedoms become the downfall of your nation. Remember that this nation is above all. There's a reason people come here, and there's a reason they come across that ocean. If you remember the videos from years ago of people coming across that ocean on makeshift rafts, very, hardly even strung together to get to this. And now we think we want to become what they ran from? That makes no sense, none whatsoever. Remember that. People climbed the board rafts made out of who knows what to leave the shores of socialist and communist countries to come to the United States of America, and now we got some that want us to become what they ran from? It's not going to happen. We're going to keep it. We're going to maintain what we have, and Onslow County will always be the coastal community of choice as we continue to fight for what it is that we believe in. And one thing this Board of Commissioners believes in is Onslow County, and we will continue to fight for that. We'll continue to argue with each other, but we all have one thing in common. We want what we truly believe is in the best interest of this county. With that being said, I'll say Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. We'll see you next year, and at this time, we need a motion to go into closed session. We are in closed session. Have a great day.